We have just returned from a closed session and I'd like the city attorney to report out any, if there was any reportable action.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council met in closed session pursuant to government code section 549, 56.9. There was no reportable action.
All right. Thank you. We will proceed to the Pledge of Allegiance led today by Mayor Protem, Mark Darris.
Dan, join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Funk?
Here.
Councilmember Newsom?
Here.
Councilmember Peak?
Here.
Mayor Protem Darris?
Here.
Mayor Borbo?
Here.
All present.
Okay. If you are attending in person or listening to the city council meeting tonight, welcome. We are going to proceed to the consent calendar and the consent calendar is for items considered routine or non-controversial by city staff will be acted upon in a single action by the city council unless otherwise requested by an individual council member for separate consideration. We will entertain public comment on consent calendar items before taking action on the consent calendar. So I will now open the public comment period for consent calendar items. But before I do that, does this, does any member of the council wish to pull the item or have any questions from staff regarding items on the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none, then we will proceed to see if there's any member of the public wishing to speak on a consent calendar item. Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council and entertain a motion.
Move approval of the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by councilmember Funk and a second by councilmember Newsom. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Funk?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Peak?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Darris?
Yes.
Mayor Borbo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Okay, we will proceed to updates from the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I wish to wish you Happy New Year, first of all, while the holidays were quiet and prosperous here in Atascadero and 25 promises to be a huge year for us with projects and programs, et cetera. The year hasn't started out great for a lot of people in Southern California, right? And so I want to start out by sharing that we have sent an engine down to support that. We have police officers at the standby, have ordered to help with looting and neighborhood protection. Our community has a long heritage of supporting other communities in need and I'm pleased that we can continue to do that. And I'm proud of our staff people who are there. But on that note, it begs a question about us and where are we in this situation? I've asked the fire chief, the police chief to review our processes and to start looking through where are we learning things already and what can we always do better? We're in great shape. I'm going to share a few things on that. I've also asked Director Banish to start putting together community information with Deputy Manager Christensen on further news to the community that we not stop that and that we really make it clear what you can do to help yourself. But let me first start by saying we, as far as burn season goes, we're obviously holding until the winds and weather permits. So we did initiate burn days, but they are on hold until weather permits, which is understood. Designated burn days are strictly monitored and allowed only when weather permits and they're restricted due to winds. And so you could take a look at our website or call the fire department to see when those are reinstated, but for now they're on hold. There have been a number of inquiries about emergency preparedness and how to best prepare for a wildlife event. And so first of all, our fire department inspects and maintains fire equipment and engines to the highest standards. I think that's important to note. So all of our equipment is fueled and functioning at all times. And I'm very impressed at the maintenance schedules and the care that our fire department looks at with our, our apparatus. We also work very closely with Atascadero Mutual Water Company. My hats off to Mr. Neal and his team to ensure water storage and hydrant systems are sufficient and reliable. They test and they also have backup devices and generators that are tested to make sure they're fully working in place there's loss of power. And so I think our system will function. God forbid we need it. Our equipment will function. But again, we only have so much equipment and the system only holds so much water. But I think what's important is that the residents know that your city government and the water company are testing these things and keeping an eye on this. We train continuously throughout the year. I think one of the benefits of our department is that the chief allows our officers to get engaged in incident management teams and be on wildfires in other communities and learn. We have one of our staff in dispatch right now, seeing how resources are distributed, how resources are received. So trying to get intel as much as we can. So again, God forbid this happens to us. We understand the systems and we're trained on it and prepared. We are very vigorous in our community wildfire prevention plan, our emergency plans and our vegetation management plan. We work to reduce fuel management consistently. And to that end, you recall, because of our efforts and the Fire Safe Council, we received nearly a million dollars for the next three years for vegetation management. It'll be one of the most aggressive vegetation management programs we've had. And that's really important. Our efforts also include the annual chipping program, weed abatement, designated burn days, and our inspections where we'll come inspect your property to advise you on how to make sure you're defensible. That consultation is a very high level of service. It's actually helped residents keep their insurance, which is a big deal. And we're going to learn a lot more about that unfortunately over the coming weeks. But that defensible space is all about it. And so I would just share on atascadero.org/fire, there's a lot more information. We'll be populating that even more so as we learn and create information relevant based on what's happened down south. But I think in the whole, you know, you should have a go-bag, you should have contact information, you should know who your neighbors are, you should be in contact with your neighbors, you should have evacuation routes and exits, you should be registered to know your zone. We're going to have a whole new layout on that as the county adopts Zone Haven. It's a different name, but it's the program this council actually helped lead. That actually tells you when it's time to go and how to get out, making sure you're signed up for reverse 911, making sure you're plugged into updates, making sure you know what you'd take quickly. There's a lot of things you can do, but most important as well as if you're a property owner, making sure your home is defensible and making sure you don't have the brush and that your, your home has closed in eaves and has fire safe construction. And again, we will give you advice. If you contact us, we'll schedule an inspection. So more information will be coming out. We'll be actually issuing a press release with a lot of this information too over the coming days. But I did want to share for right now, burning season's on hold and there's quite a bit of information there about what we're doing. Next slide I have is I want to talk about the El Comun real project and construction. We continue to make great progress where it's unfortunate we haven't had a wet year or rainy season. That's fortunate for this project. We're moving along. There's only been two days. We have anywhere from 20 to 40 workers out there every day. There's only been two days since the project started back on June, I think, 6th that we haven't had workers on site. So the SUSE construction's been very thorough and diligent in making sure we continue to work. What is that work? So it's milling pavement, installing pavers, concrete work on curbs and planters. I walked it today. You can see, gosh, from, we're done in front of like Cuckleberries and it is, as we're done, we're going to try and lift the K rails to actually show the width of the street. It is actually striking. It's nearly three to four feet more in some places. And I think to see that is very helpful for a motorist. And so I appreciate the public works where it's safe is recommending we lift the K rails so you can actually see the work and, and the, the size of the street. So we'll continue to do that, but there still will be travel delays in lanes as we're working through it. But we're done there. Many of the, the curbs and gutters and medians, if you will, have been poured all the way towards Cielo and La Plaza, which is really neat. The electrical is going in down the center or the lighting, the special lighting that we're putting in, the stand, the posts for that are in. So you can, we'll just, you know, just pop in the lighting. So a lot of that's really coming along. So it's looking very real. And I want to, I don't want to say when it will be done because we don't know, right? As far as rain or other things, but it's progressing well and we're still very optimistic. The very early summer, we'll be enjoying our new project, which, you know, February is right around the corner. So we're, we're getting there. So access to businesses and driveways will always remain open, but please stay alert as you go about the corridor. If you want to see roadwork, go ahead, like what's going on next week and the week after. We do update the website at atascadero.org/ECRproject. So that's, that's really important. Okay, onto quality of life. We have some neat events coming out of recreation. We have an inaugural mother-son dance. This is actually neat. I'm not familiar with cities that have done this in our area. And we do get questions from time to time. You do the father-daughter dance, but what about moms and their sons? And so this is something we're going to roll out for the first time. Lot of interest in it. January 31st, 6:30 to 9:30 at the pavilion. The theme is love you to the moon and back. So DJ prizes, snacks, professional photos, very similar to father-daughter dance. We really think this will sell out quick. So if you want tickets to this thing, mothers and fathers, buy your tickets early. Don't be one of those poor parents while your kid comes home from school and asks if you have tickets and you say no, and they're sold out. Don't be that one. Go buy your tickets right now. Okay. Annual father-daughter dance, also tickets are selling quick. It is Friday, February 7th and so, and February 8th. So February 7th is suggested ages under 12. So this is for the littles, February 7th. February 8th is 12 and over. And so how fortunate you are as a father, if your daughter wants to go with you when she's 12 and over, that's pretty neat. And that is on Friday, the 8th. For both dance events, tickets are $37 per couple. If you live in Atascadero, 93422, and they're $43 a couple for non-residents. Additional daughters or sons are $5 apiece. We try and be reasonable with that. For both dance events, tickets can only be purchased, this is key, at the Colony Park Community Center. So it's open daily, Monday through Friday from 9 to 5, but you got to buy your ticket in person. So make that note. You have to prepare to do that. A little bit on our zoo and time for our three-day weekend coming up, we'll be opening a new exhibit, the Serraro, Serrato Aviaries Exhibit. So you can see there, there is one of our beautiful parrots. On Saturday, 8th, the 18th, at 3:30, we'll kick off this new exhibit with an official ribbon cutting. This is the Serrato Biodiverse Hot Spot. It's right below the Amazon Rainforest, covering one-fifth of Brazil. It's a very diverse hotspot and it includes the largest savanna in South America. So you'll see the highest symptom of cause. There's one there and the Toco toucans. The toucans are really cool. If you like Fruit Loops, this is right up your alley. But those are just two of the many bird species found in this area. We thank the Atascadero Lakeside Wine Festival Committee and Friends of Charles Petec Zoo for bringing this exhibit to life. So I think that's about all I have. I would just say some folks and some of you councilmembers have noticed an increased police presence in the afternoons downtown. I wanted to salute Chief Suttles and his department on kicking off the special enforcement team. So that is in effect. You'll see increased patrols in that area as we look to focus on really the root cause. And I think the chief did a good job in the newspaper there the other day, talking about the special enforcement team and really getting to the root cause of drug issues, gang issues, which, and other issues that are, impact our quality of life. And so I'm pleased to see that team rolling. It was really important to the chief and I, and we started discussing it last year when he started. And so that's the result of that. That concludes my report. If there's questions, council, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you. Does any member of the council have questions for the city manager? Seeing none, we will proceed on to community forum. Community forum is reserved for persons wanting to address the city council on any matter not on the agenda and over which the council has jurisdiction. Speakers are limited to three minutes and please state your name for the record before making your comments. And I will note that under the Brown Act, the council is prohibited from entering into any significant discussion on any item raised during community forum that is not on the agenda. So we may ask staff at our discretion a question or ask staff to address something very quickly, but other than that, we, we cannot get into in detail items raised in community forum. With that, are there any members of the public wishing to speak during community forum? Yes, please approach the podium and please, if you would like to speak, go ahead and get in line. So we don't have to, you know, wait for people to walk up. All right, please state your name and go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Sherry Hafer.
Okay.
Our family has lived in Atascadero since 1992 and we run a commercial fishing business out of Morro Bay. I am excited to tell you about an important upcoming event. On this Saturday, January 18th, beginning at noon at Morro Rock and Morro Bay, there will be a National Day of Action in opposition to offshore wind energy development. This event is called End It. It is organized and sponsored by the recently formed Coalition NOAA, the National Offshore Wind Opposition Alliance, and presented by the Morro Bay-based nonprofit, nonpartisan volunteer organization called the React Alliance. The event at Morro Rock, held Rain or Shine, will include short presentations and then at approximately 12:30, attendees will be encouraged to peacefully march along the Harbor Walk in the Embarcadero. Signs will be provided or you can bring your own. The event is focused on letting the incoming administration know with a united voice, there is significant opposition to offshore wind energy from the west coast to the east coast and his promise to end it must be kept. This event is a public outcry of national solidarity and opposition to the destructive, costly, and inefficient offshore wind energy industry. For more information about offshore wind energy in general, please visit reactalliance.org. I will put up this poster on the back table and see you at the Rock Saturday at noon.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. This is my first time at an Atascadero city council meeting. So what a beautiful place to have it. My name's Jessica McGinnis. I am your public sector representative for waste management. I started with waste management last year, recently coming into this role in May of 2024. My predecessor, Liz Gomez, you may be familiar with. She was in this role for a very long time. She has been a great mentor for me and still very involved with my public sector chapter, although this is now one of my jurisdictions. So I'd like to just introduce myself to you today to become more familiar. I work closely with the IWMA to ensure that the city of Atascadero is meeting its regulation state requirements on compliance along with our SB 1383 guidelines. I communicate with them on a daily basis and it really helps with communication with customers and just making sure that we're all on the same page as your holler. I also work closely with Terry Banish, the Director of Community Services, to make sure that our contractual agreement is being upheld for the community events in our beautiful city. I also work closely with Ryan Betts in the Public Works Department. We meet regularly to discuss any sort of service issues, any sort of complaints or concerns that may be happening in our community to make sure that they're addressed accordingly. And today I just want to do a quick little recap on our fall cleanup we had back in October. It was the most successful cleanup to date. We had 792 customers utilize the voucher system, getting rid of unwanted waste within our community. And we are working to streamline our future events to ensure that the community will participate. Hopefully our spring numbers will beat that. I love to be involved with this community and being new to my public sector role, I try and be involved as much as I can. Waste management, of course, if you've been to our events in the city, you see waste management equipment at most of them. We are proud to also do sponsorships within other aspects of our community. We have partnerships with Echo. We've recently partnered with Atascadero High School for a few things within being offered to their students. We also are supporters of Kiwanis and we're Leadership Circle members with the Chamber of Commerce. And Concerts in the Park being one of our largest events that we provide services for throughout the summer months has been a great hit. We had an opportunity this last year to provide a booth, giving out recycling information as well and getting in touch with the community, making sure that they know that we are members that live right here. Let's see here. I can, I hope that we can continue to embrace our partnership with, between the city and waste management. And I look forward to speaking with you. If you have any questions, please reach out.
Okay. Thank you.
Of course.
And it's been, it's great to meet you because we are going to have interactions. So thank you for speaking today.
Of course. Thank you.
Okay, next speaker, please.
Good evening, council. Wendy Lewis with El Comino Homeless Organization or Echo. I'm here just to update the council and the community on what 2024 looked like and kind of the milestones we all achieved as a community to support people back into the stability of housing. I am very proud to say that in 2023, we had record numbers for our organization and helped 201 individuals and children into permanent housing. And in 2024, proud to share that we helped more people than the year prior. In fact, we helped 256 individuals and children into permanent housing. And that's through our shelter and outreach programs with our partnership with the police department and our outreach teams. So some people, when the outreach program went straight from being on the streets into housing, not even ever staying with Echo. Another important number to share with you is we have homeless prevention programs and we have started really highlighting that in the community more this past year. And what that means is if someone comes home, the mom leaving school, picking up the kids and they have that awful notice on your door, it's, you have three days to figure out your solution or you're going to find yourselves without housing. We have special grant funding where we're able to support that person or that family unit and keep them in that housing. But part of that requirement when we bring that support is they have to also opt into case management. So they're housed, but we case manage them while they're housed, to teach them financial literacy and different components. So they don't find themselves needing our shelter services. And so that number was 97. So if you take those two numbers and add them up, in 2024, we were able to help 353 individuals or children find shelter and find housing or stay in their housing. And so it's only possible with all of the support we get from our volunteers, our sponsors, like folks and the audience and our caring staff and the community. One other update I'd love to share is that we came to you in December and we have big plans to expand and add a family wing and expand some of our services. We listened to council that night and the community. We've met with the city manager and we've implemented some of the steps that you asked us to kind of look at, to hear the community even more. We will be having a neighborhood meeting in January and we've sent out postcards to larger radius of our neighbors so that more people can come to that meeting and attend, give feedback, find solutions to some of the things we're facing. I have brought five cards for each council and the mayor. So that way if somebody you know that might have questions or concerns, might not have gotten that notice, we'd love for you to share that word as well and welcome all of you to attend as also. So thank you again for your support. We couldn't do it without you.
Thank you, Wendy. You can just pass them to the city manager. He'll pass, we'll pass them all to councilmember Peak and he'll pass them down to us. Or that way. All right. Thank you for your comment. Do we have anybody else wishing to speak during community forum? Okay. If not, then that will, we will close a community forum. And if any member of the public who has questions or needs further information, they may contact City Clerk's Office for answers or specific info at 805-470-3400 or cityclerk@atascadero.org. Okay, we will proceed to our next item, which is a public hearing on ADU ordinance update. We will begin the discussion by asking members of the council if they had any ex parte communications on this matter. Nope, 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 nope. None for me either. Okay. So we will proceed and we will turn it over to our Community Development Director, Mr. Phil Dunsmore, to present this item.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of the council. Now normally we have ample amount of time to prepare code amendments and we do a thorough job of evaluating the merits of a code amendment. We look at, you know, potential case law that has taken place and we, you know, very thoughtfully bring code amendments forward. With tonight's amendment proposal, that's not so much the case. And council may have some questions for staff that we may not be able to answer perfectly. And that's because this is one that's kind of, I'll say, just being kind of forced upon us by the state of California to be able to accommodate some mandatory changes to accessory dwelling unit law. And, you know, potentially they're good changes. However, they really honestly have not been vetted and they are required to be put into our code beginning January 1 of this year. Let's see if I can get this little clicker to work to go forward. Ah, here we go. Perfect. So there was two Senate bills adopted in 2024. One of them was SB 1211. That's the bigger one. And that one basically says that our local ordinance is null and void unless we incorporate these changes. And these changes essentially allow a larger number of accessory dwelling units in a multifamily project. The other one, Senate Bill 477, is really just minor changes to code section referencing, not a huge deal. But we also took this opportunity to just fix some minor things in our code at the same time. So it's always a good opportunity to have. So let's talk about the big one, SB 1211. So previously, our ADU law, which we've updated multiple times in the past few years, allows for one detached accessory dwelling unit in a multifamily project. What's a multifamily project? It's a project that contains two or more dwelling units in a multifamily district. It's an apartment building. Usually, it's usually attached. So previously, they would say that you could take out parking and move parking around, but that it needs to be provided in return on the site. So now the big change is in a newer multifamily project that hasn't been built yet, you can now put in two ADU units. But then in an existing multifamily project, you could do up to eight. That's a lot. Eight above the density that's allowed in that particular development, if you can fit it. Now, the stipulation there is there has to be eight or more units existing on that particular project site in order to fit those eight. The interesting, fascinating thing about this too is you can take over a parking lot in that project and not mandate that parking be replaced. So definitely is a, it's a housing stimulus idea. All cities are going to have to put this in place in California, but it really hasn't been tested. So we have a lot of questions around it, a lot of nuances that we can't answer yet. It hasn't been in practice yet. The other one, Senate Bill 477, is really just matching up citation numbers. We have to take it in. It really just changes a few things around. But we're also taking the opportunity to do some other wording updates for clarity. We had some confusion on the language for septic systems to account for parcels that are under SB 9. And then there's a newer Senate Bill 684 that allows for these small lot subdivisions. And we were, we needed to add a clause in our ordinance that prohibits the accessory dwelling units on these small lot subdivisions. And then we had to clean up some development standards that are now inconsistent with state law. Now, in your staff report, we do have the redlined language of the code amendments and we have our, our staff planner here tonight too, Sam Mountain. And he's, he can answer your questions that are details about that if I don't have those answers. The Planning Commission did look at this on December, December 17th, and they did recommend that we adopt these amendments to our planning and zoning code. That's chapter five of our zoning for consistency with state law and at the same time determine that these changes are exempt from CEQA. I will add a quick note. We did directly copy the code language from our online version. It turns out there was an error in the online version. One little word was missing. The word lines in 9-5.050E4. We had to reflect that in the updated, updated exhibit. I have to mention that in public, that that word's being added back in. It was after the word property, property lines and, and it just, it didn't have that in there. So the actual ordinance language in your staff report includes this word and it'll be shown within the second reading exhibit. But that leaves us to recommendation, which is to introduce this for first reading by title only, the draft ordinance to amend Title IX, which is chapter five, the accessory dwelling unit section for consistency with state law. And then if, if it is approved tonight, we'd come back for a second reading on January 28th and it would go into effect 30 days after that. But at this point, I would be happy to answer your questions. Thank you.
Okay. Does any member of the council have questions for staff? Mr. Mayor Protem Darris?
On the, the addition of potential eight ADU units, does, I imagine the complex, apartment complex, wherever it might be, needs to be currently built out to its maximum density?
That's a good question. That's the intent. And that's what we do right now. Right now, we require, if someone can build more units, instead of building ADUs, we require them to build units. Otherwise, they get to bypass all kinds of other laws. If they just call something an ADU when they can build a normal density. And so currently that's how our ADU policies work at the city of Atascadero. Yes. So I'll, I'll say yes.
Okay. Cause, cause like say the Bordeaux, I don't know what their MF rating is or whatever, or if they, and if they've built out completely to their density, whatever that might be. If, if they have not, in order for them to put any ADUs on that property and therefore take up parking, which really to me just is not good. They would have to then essentially add to additional apartment units before they could do that.
That's right.
I want to clarify this for anybody that's watching because I think this is a ridiculous thing that they're doing. I was being straightforward with it. But the other thing is on, on the SB 684, this is, I'm kind of changing gears here. I don't really quite understand that one specifically, but how is this going to affect SB 9 splits?
I don't think it really affects the SB 9s, but we already don't allow ADUs in SB 9. And so I think that there's just some clarification on it. Let's take a look at the, the code language there. Let's see. Nope, ran out. Did I run to the very end already? Oh, did I close that out? Come on up, Sam, and we can trade places with the fire chief for just a moment. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Limited by dais length. Yes, so I'm Sam Mountain, Assistant Planner. I think most of you have met me. Seth, good to see you on the dais there. Yes, so ADUs are are eligible to be built on lots that are subdivided under SB nine if those lots otherwise meet our eligibility criteria. The main distinction here is that SB nine only applies to parcels that are zoned for single family use and are currently used as a single family residence. SB twelve eleven, besides requiring us to change a small number of design standards for ADUs within our code, only applies to multifamily developments. And so the addition of, for example, eight ADUs on a property, that only applies to multifamily properties that are built out already to eight or more units and have already reached their max density. So it wouldn't affect properties that have been subdivided under SB nine, because those are required to be single family parcels.
Well said, Sam. Thank you. Perfect.
Thank you. And then considering the parking issue, I mean, if this takes up a significant number of whatever parking is available, there's nothing we can do to, I don't know, change that or?
It doesn't. It doesn't appear at this time that we have much control over that situation. It feels like it's something that's made much more for a substantial urban environment where there's a lot of other options and a lot of other crossroads and things like that. In Atascadero, sure, that could produce an impact where we have significant high density multifamily areas that are accessed directly off of El Camino Real, where we don't have that available parking. You take it away and you you instantly produce potential circulation or traffic or parking impacts. The hope is that some of these units, you know, because they may be affordable by design, there's not as many vehicles. But we'll see if if this really comes to fruition and if it really gets taken advantage of. The reality is, there's not a lot of already developed multifamily sites that are maxed out to density that would be able to fit a project of this nature with multiple ADUs. You might be able to fit one or two on a whole site, eight, you know, it potentially. And the idea here is they're detached. So it's very challenging, I think, just from a pure fit and a pure common sense standpoint. And a lot of in a lot of cases, too, property owners, developers, they don't, they need to supply parking because that markets those units. And so not having that, is that going to be marketable? Is that going to be effective for them? In some scenarios, it might be, but for the most case, probably not.
Yeah, I'm just concerned. I mean, even one or two on a lot taking up the parking, I think, is just is just not fair to the people that are already living there and for the surrounding areas. Anyway, that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Since we started over here, we'll go to see if council member peak. No questions. Okay. Council member Funk?
Yeah, just a couple. I know that we don't have a lot of choice about doing this. So but just to understand, this applies in the application of this, can you distinguish between multifamily dwellings, multifamily projects, and multifamily zoning in terms of where this this new thing applies?
And this is multifamily projects within a multifamily zoning district. As you know, in Atascadero, we do have some nonconforming multifamily buildings that are in single family districts that wouldn't apply. It would have to actually be multifamily zoning with a multifamily project.
Okay, and if it if you have a multifamily project in multifamily zoning, or higher where we have higher density zoning, but it's, you know, more like a condo project or, you know, something like Dove Creek, for instance, my understanding is that this would not apply to most of those those kinds of situations where you've got where it's not a multifamily dwelling.
Parts of parts of Dove Dove Creek are multifamily, but a lot of Dove Creek is either single family attached or single family detached condos, all on individual properties. So it's a little different. It's a planned development. It's a little different than typical multifamily zoning or multifamily project. Yeah.
And if there were a situation where this this occurred in an in a environment, a project that has a homeowners association governing the rules, and the homeowners association doesn't permit ADUs, would the the new state rule, this new ordinance apply or the HOA rules apply? Or do we know?
If state law in this case supersedes what an HOA is ability, they wouldn't be able to prevent it.
Okay. But as far as you know, are there are there any places where this would apply in town at this point that that are HOA governed?
Sorry, could you repeat that question?
Are you aware of any places in town that are HOA governed that where this new ordinance would apply?
Certainly. Yes, there's probably several where there are small HOAs where they would be able to do these ADUs. But I don't know that these HOAs would strongly oppose or how they would react to it. I don't know that end of it. But I do know there are multiple projects that have HOAs that that would be potentially impacted by this change.
Okay, and if the if this is occurring in an area where there are multiple owners that are part of the project, who gets to do these units? Or is it just first come, first served?
As far as we know, it's first come, first serve at this point.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Newsom, any questions? Okay, I have a question. I want to understand this better, although as councilmember Funk noted, we don't have a lot of choice here. But along the lines of what Mayor Portemderis was getting at, I visualizing, let's say, a small apartment complex with eight units, like something on the way to the high school, if you're, you know, swinging from trafficway left onto our DIA there. You got a couple of two story buildings, maybe there's a total of four or eight units. They could literally, under this, essentially build in the parking lot? If I'm hearing this correctly?
Yes. Now, keep in mind, they'd still have to maintain emergency vehicle access. They can't violate health and safety standards. So in a lot of these cases, these parking lots act as the emergency vehicle access. So if there was a parking lot large enough to support both the emergency vehicle access and the parking and put in these structures and the utilities and all the other things needed to get people to walk in and out of them, yes.
Because I mean, the parking's a double whammy in the sense of if you had eight units and eight spots, you could go to having ten or twelve units with four spots.
Yes.
So in other words, you're going from a one to one ratio to a one spot to three ratio.
Technically, yes, yes.
And then you're going to put them out on the street. So I've pictured on Santa, San Yanez, or Santa Isabel over here, you're potentially really kind of flood the neighborhood, if you will, with with cars, because you're using a parking to do it. So, okay. Because the underlying question, I think somebody asked is, how many, you know, places do you think this really physically applies? But most places have parking lots. And so that, except for the emergency vehicle access, it seems like that would become potentially very much an issue for that that these things could be built.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, it's going to be interesting to see how this plays out. And also, if we approved a new apartment complex and they were up to density, they could turn around after completion and then use up the parking to build more ADUs?
Yes. So they couldn't do it as part of that new project. But then again, if it's an existing project, which it would be existing the day after we grant final approval and occupancy.
Yeah, I mean, they could finish a new project, turn around a year later and build things in the parking lot. So, okay, all right. I think we understand it. Let's, if no further questions, we'll turn to see if there is any public comment on this item. Okay, seeing no one, you want to speak? Okay, seeing no one approach the podium, we will return it back to the council for any further discussion or a motion. Not that anybody wants to make this motion, but we do need somebody to make a motion on this item. Okay. Anybody want to comply with state law here?
I'll move approval of staff's recommendations.
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. And clerk, do we need to read the ordinance? The title? It says it's first reading, so.
Yeah, it's for it's this is you're doing it now. Yeah, I don't need to read it out. The law has changed.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay, then let's go ahead and call the roll.
Yes. Councilmember Funk.
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom.
Yes.
Councilmember Peak.
Yes.
Mayor Portemderis.
Yes.
And Mayor Borbo.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is actually a notice of public hearing cancellation. What do we need to read to do that?
Nothing. We just needed to notify this as part of the agenda that that had been canceled since it had previously been notified.
Okay, thank you. Yes, this was an item on changing ordinance regarding a downtown entertainment zone, and we will be discussing that at a subsequent meeting. So this hearing was canceled. Okay, thank you. With that, we will move to management reports. Item B one, our twenty twenty five federal and state legislative platform. I believe that will be Mr. Lewis, our city manager.
I'll just share, there's a couple. I'll have Ms. Christiansen talk about the platform. But there's this is a unique situation tonight. One, we do want you to review the platform that Ms. Christiansen will talk about. Two, we want to hear from our state lobbyist, Mr. Gonzalez, giving an update on what's going on in Sacramento. And then three, because it kind of ties to an impact or potential legislation, we've invited a member of Slow Cog to actually talk to you about a proposal they're seeking support on regarding potential legislation. So we'll ask for a vote tonight on the legislative platform and a vote tonight on whether you want to support that or not. So that's kind of a different order of things. But I'll turn this over to Ms. Christiansen to discuss the platform. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, council. Mayor Borbo. We just recently reaffirmed the legislative program back in May. We brought it to you last December, December of twenty twenty three. There was some we there was some initial approval of it to move us forward as we moved into the legislative session, but that we wanted to bring it back. So in March, during council's workshop, we did dive more in depth into it, cleaned some of the statements up, and then reaffirmed it by a unanimous council vote back in May. We've read back through it based on what legislation was passed, what is potentially still hanging out there after talking with our lobbyist, Jason Gonzalez, who I'll introduce in a minute, and he'll give you an update on the twenty twenty four legislative session. But after going through all that, we haven't proposed any changes to this platform. This is still a really crucial platform. It's and the purpose of the platform, just for the public and councilmember Peak, who is new, this is our official policy statement. It allows us to interact with federal state, federal and state officials, and to take positions on legislation. It helps when we give this to our lobbyists as things are coming up or being discussed, then he knows what the city's take is on it. As we interact with the League of California Cities, both councilmember Newsom and I are also on policy committee. So this helps inform us as we are meeting with our policy committee members. And then it also is a best practice, really, for communicating to the public, for staff, when staff is communicating, and then just letting everyone know what the city's position is on these types of issues that are out there. And then it also helps council, as councils on certain boards and commissions and committees as well, that they know what the city's policy and legislative platform is as things come up there that impact us both local and regionally. We break it up first by identifying priority policy areas. These they're the same three that we identified last year, which is affordable housing and homeless resources, infrastructure funding and maintaining local control. These three things still remain really important to the city. We just had an item on ADU, which is obviously being generated by legislation that's being passed more than it's being generated by staff. And so those types of things, as the legislator, as the legislation in the state continues to change, how that impacts us here, what that looks like, how we can maintain local control, where we can continue to advocate for funding for infrastructure. We have a lot of infrastructure projects coming up. And so this just this really does empower staff to get out there and go after the things that we need. It helps when we're looking at grants. It helps with lobbyists. It helps go in talking with the federal government and with their coming up with ideas or thinking of changing legislation to then talk to them about how and why that impacts our city. We then also come up with policy statements that pretty much coincide with all of our departments. So we have policy statements that impact community development, employee relations, administration, budget, finance. So almost every department here is represented, and then some of our divisions specifically are represented, because the work that is being done is critical. And those are things that continually come up, either, like I said, for funding opportunities or where legislation could have a real impact on how we do business or how we help our residents. And so what we're asking tonight is that council, again, reaffirm this platform for twenty twenty five and allow staff to continue to streamline the council's advocacy efforts by allowing by having this platform and allowing staff to immediately respond. When we don't have a platform, just to back up for a minute, when we don't have a platform and an item comes up that where we want to send a letter, we would need to then agendize that and bring it back. So sometimes that could be two weeks. If it's something that's come up in a summertime or on and off, sometimes it could be three or four weeks, which would then be too late for us to get our voice heard as well. So this allows staff to take immediate action on pressing legislative items. And then we're efficiently moving forward the city's priorities under council direction. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions on the platform.
Okay, does any member of the council have questions for Ms. Christiansen? Councilmember Funk?
Just checking if it's within purview for us to suggest small additions in light of new information tonight?
Sure, if there's changes that you would like made to the platform, now is a great time for that, actually.
Okay.
Go ahead, if you have suggestions.
Since the particulars are not necessarily a question, but discussion, did you want to ask for public comment first?
Sure, if you want to if you want to save your suggestion till after. Yes, if there's any member of the public would like to comment on this item, please approach the podium. Okay, seeing none, we will return it to council for discussion.
Okay, thanks. Having spent, like many of us, a lot of time looking at the LA fires in the last week, I noticed in our section on on this is page fifty nine, in our we in fire EMS and disaster preparedness, we don't actually have anything on on disaster response. And so I would suggest simply adding a support prompt and consistent funding for recovery from natural disasters wherever they occur. And that would be a federal item. We know this community has been through that drill, and we know how hard it is to have a disaster that is beyond the scope of the local community to handle. And reliability of federal funding will be important.
I would assume, though, that would also apply to the state, although obviously, you're probably thinking in terms of FEMA, you know, that sort of federal funding. But the state also does provide funding for disaster relief. And I don't see that there. Would the city manager care to comment? Because for me, this thing actually feels too long with too many items. But I understand it being a whole laundry list. It gives the staff kind of our preapproval to go out and seek this kind of assistance. So specifically adding, hey, you know, in the event of a disaster that affects Tascadero, you know, we certainly would seek relief from both federal and state resources. And if that required, you know, the assistance of legislation, they would want you to be able to do that. Does that make sense?
We don't have an issue with that. And that is not, councilmember Funk discussed that with me. I don't believe that's actually in here. So I we wouldn't have issue adding a sentence that we would support funding for disaster relief assistance. I think the reason it is long, and I appreciate you saying that, Mayor, is because the shorter this is, the less the more discretion that puts on the staff as far as preparing letters. And that's a dangerous place for us to be when these are policy issues. So that is why it's a little longer. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, councilmember Funk?
I would I would go with the mayor's excellent suggestion that that be included both in the federal and the state sections.
Okay, and?
And then two, yeah, two very small items. Okay. Well, one is not not so small, but the in light of what we're all seeing here, for both federal and state, support the consideration of ways to stabilize the market for homeowners and renters insurance. I'm this I'm suggesting that supporting consideration, meaning we want to see meaning we want to see the government be at both levels, be working on this without taking any position as to what the form of that stabilization might be. We just know we've got a mess and a lot of folks in this community are already scrambling to get their homeowner's insurance and keep their homeowner's insurance, and it's likely to get worse before it gets better.
Okay, um, city manager, I, you know, that seems to be a valid point, but I don't know what we, how we would phrase that particular thing.
That one can be a little more challenging, because what if, if the state of California came forward with a plan to raise taxes blank percent to support home insurance rates, we would not send a blanket. I'd bring that back to you, because that's a, that's a real different deal. So I think it's one to encourage FEMA or the OES to release funds for recovery efforts. That's insurance one, it's up to the council, but I'd want to talk that through a little more. And if that's important to the council, we might want to wordsmith that at our February meeting, perhaps. I think Mayor Susan, sorry, Councilmember Funk, Mayor Pro Tim, I'm, it's a new year. I'm trying to get used to all this myself.
Whoever I am.
I, I think specifically, do we support discussions or policies to stabilize the market? Something like that might be okay, but I think that I would be concerned that there's a lot of different market mechanisms you could use on something like that. So we'd want a little more perspective.
Right, I think the point is, I mean, we would certainly support, expect at the state level and maybe support the federal level solutions to the home insurance crisis, but we're not really in a place to have a good discussion of, you know, what kind of solutions those might be. But we certainly expect our state to do what it can to, you know, do something about the homeowner insurance crisis. So I'm not sure, maybe that's something we could defer till February, and if you want to have a discussion or maybe suggest something more specific at that time. But I don't know if we can kind of, you know, make that sausage here tonight.
Sure, I, that would be fine, or we could make it a little bit broader language or just saying encourage the exploration of ways to stabilize the insurance. I think it's valuable for us to take an expectation, we expect our government to do something in this market which is broken and which is so critically important to our ability of people in this community to stay housed, to get housed, to have their lives be manageable. But the format of this is not something, you know, we're not insurance experts. And, and I wouldn't expect this council to necessarily, certainly at this point, take a position, but to say, we expect you to be in action on this.
What if you support efforts to maintain viability of the home insurance market in California?
That would be.
Support efforts to maintain the viability of the homeowner's insurance market. And then I think if there, I would come back to you if something was a more controversial policy, but there are things that the Department of Insurance does through CalCities that we work with. Fire chief was involved in one of those that that would allow us to support or share our thoughts on that. We applaud the discussions to maintain the insurance markets.
Yes, okay. If you're comfortable with, you know, suggesting some, something, a sentence along those lines, we'll just see where the rest of the council is on that, if you're comfortable with adding that sentence along those lines to the platform. Good with that. Okay, did you have one other?
Yeah, and then just in the section above where we, where we are on page 62, where we're urging congressional action to adopt spending plans that support a variety of sustainable funding, a variety of programs that are critical to our, to, to getting our unhoused persons back into housing. After project-based vouchers, I would simply include healthcare services. This, or healthcare services for vulnerable persons. What we're seeing in the end homelessness is a rise in seniors who are becoming homeless. And there are a lot of folks who have medical issues that contribute to their difficulty in, in, in sustaining themselves or are effects of being unhoused for periods of time. And getting them medically whole again is an important piece of the pathway to get them off of our streets, out of our creeks, and back into housing. So I just would encourage, you know, just adding that.
Yeah, I don't think that this language would preclude that. In other words, I don't know that we would have to add that phraseology for that to be part of what we're doing. I don't know, Mr. Lewis, do you have commentary on that?
I think that's just more of a policy issue. I, it's up to the council. If you see that, that's up to you.
Okay, I mean, I feel like the language is, wouldn't preclude us from advocating for that, for that. You know, I don't know, I would defer look to the other councilmembers, Councilmember Newsom.
I think with the direction that we're going with some of the verbiage in here, I think we're already trying to address some of the homeless challenges and supportive services, I think, is inclusive of that topic. So I'd say at this point, I don't think we need to add additional verbiage. I think supportive services would be inclusive.
Councilmember Peak, any comments? Mayor Pro Tim Daras, okay, you agree with?
What Heather just said.
With Councilmember Newsom? Okay, all right. Okay, on that one, I don't see consensus to rush into that. So I think if, if okay, we will leave that one as is for now.
Sure, and particularly with having had the opportunity to discuss this, we've given guidance to staff that, that we do see healthcare as part of the supportive services that we are including.
Okay, any further questions or comments from other councilmembers? Okay, if not, I believe we've already gone through public comments, so we could proceed to a motion that would need to include the two changes mentioned.
Yes, Mayor, and to be clear, I have support funding for disaster relief programs and support efforts to preserve the private homeowner's insurance market in California.
Okay, and the first one would go under both state info.
Correct, sir.
Got it. Okay, that clarification.
I would, I would move approval of the legislative platform as amended.
All right, do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Funk, a second by Mayor Pro Tim Daras. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Funk?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Peak?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Daras?
Yes.
And Mayor Borbo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. With that, we are going to proceed to item C two, I believe. Approval of the fiscal year, wait, 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 I'm sorry, we're not done with that. We have to discuss the slow spot, SlowCog aspect.
Or your lobbyist. We want you to hear from your lobbyist, too. He's online.
We have to hear from Mr. Wether, who came all the way here for us. Okay, so let's go ahead and proceed with this discussion.
Yes, I think we are trying to get our lobbyist on Zoom. He may be there by voice, but not by camera.
Luke, is this something, are you seeing him?
I am here. Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, there we go. Yes, we can hear you, Jason. Thanks.
It sounds like, or seems like I may not be on the camera, so maybe that spares you from having to see me. But if, if you'd like me to proceed, I'll, I'll go ahead.
Well, let's see, the speaker is, I don't know if it's the speaker, but it's kind of reverberating a little bit. Luke, is there anything we can do about that? Yeah, before we have you proceed, we want to make sure we can hear you clearly.
So quickly, while Luke is sorting that on the phone and coming through, is Jason Gonzalez with Gonzalez and Sons. They are the city's lobbyists and have been for the past decade, I want to say, longer, I guess.
Many years.
Several, maybe a couple of decades. They are fantastic to work with. They are quick to respond to us. They meet with us when we are up in Sacramento. They are tied in, they work with a lot of other cities. They are tied in with the League of California Cities. When we've had some issues in the past, they have helped to coordinate our connections with the committees, with our congressman, Congresswoman, Congressman at the time, or our senator. They have been phenomenal to work with and do a fantastic job keeping us informed, continually advocating on our behalf. And with that, we'll see if we're good to go, and you guys can hear directly from Jason.
Okay, this will be an oral report on the 2024 legislative session wrap-up and a look ahead to 2025. Go ahead, Mr. Gonzalez.
Well, thank you, Laura, and thank you, Mayor, and members of the council, and congratulations, Councilmember Peak. Very much appreciate the opportunity. Our firm, as mentioned, has had the privilege and honor of representing your city. I don't want to date myself, but I know it predates 2011, because we had quite a bit of fun, and fun's not the right word, during the redevelopment dissolution and protecting the continued construction of your beautiful city hall. So I know that timeline well, because it was a critically important part of the process and a project. Obviously, the, the results speak for themselves, a project worth protecting. So again, thank you for the opportunity. Just very briefly on the 2024 legislative session, because as noted by your planning staff and the number of bills that came out of Sacramento, I think most of us would probably like to forget the 1,206 bills the legislature sent to Governor Newsom prior to the August 31 adjournment. Of those 1,206, the governor signed 1,017. So we have, as of January, 1,000-plus new bills on the, on the books. The end of session was rather chaotic. Not the least of which, there was, as you know, a top-of-the-ticket change for the presidential election that created quite a bit of excitement in California, and we lost a good chunk of the Democratic Legislature about 10 days prior to the final adjournment to the Democratic National Convention. So that created kind of a pressure cooker for the end of session and those 1,000 bills. As we, what we also saw was rather than just an ordinary adjournment, the governor had called an extraordinary session just prior to the August 31 adjournment, seeking to address oil refinery reserves and gas prices. That was extraordinary session one. The legislature did act in October. We'll see if the reserves and how the gas prices pan out at the pump, so to speak. I would note that prior to the legislature passing the governor's proposal, the governors of Arizona and Nevada, Arizona being a Democrat, Nevada being a Republican governor, sent a letter encouraging the governor not to proceed with the proposal, given concerns on, on potential effects at the pump in their state. So we'll, we'll see how that, that plays out. Couple quickly issues that we anticipate will continue. Public safety was at the forefront of the 2024 legislative session. There was a number of efforts either in lieu of, in, to replace Proposition 36. The governor, Democratic leadership, had indicated they didn't feel public safety needed to go to the voters, and the District Attorney and Retailers Initiative, which now seems like old news, didn't need to proceed in November. There was a bill of 11, 11 bill package on public safety seeking to combat retail theft. The legislature tried, and the governor tried to leverage that as a substitute for Prop 36. Ultimately, it did not have support. They even attempted to have an alternative initiative placed on the ballot. That too didn't have support, and what we ended up with, as you know, was Prop, Proposition 36, as well as the 11 bills were signed by the governor, and we will see how that proceeds. But I would note Proposition 36 passed in every county of the state, all 58 counties. So we'll, we'll continue to see the implementation of Prop 36 and the legislature's reaction to that in the current session, the 2025, 26 legislative session. As noted earlier in the report, housing continues to be a priority within the legislature. I would, I would say unfortunately, we'll see, you know, 20, 30 housing bills that take effect, as noted in, again, your planning staff did a fantastic job highlighting a couple of them earlier. And, and then between now and the February bill introduction deadline, we'll see another 20 bills proposed, just as you're trying to ramp up for what took effect in January, or, you know, January 1 of this year. So it's a constant attempt to incentivize housing, but it doesn't provide locals a whole lot of opportunity to come up for air and actually implement what's being passed in the prior session and, and see those results. So we are continuing to advocate for local control, as noted in your platform, and also perhaps local input and results before having to yet again pivot towards another slew of, of housing bills. Continuing, you know, the 2025 legislative session, I would say after the November election, I don't know that anyone anticipated from either party or even non-party preferences the results of the election nationwide and also in California. The governor immediately called a, after the November election, an extra, another extraordinary session to prepare for President-elect Trump. That extraordinary session yesterday had fire relief and fire insurance. And I, I think the mayor and council did a very good job anticipating what may or may not come out of, you know, the tragedy and, and challenges in Southern California. But we will definitely see a number of bills on the current fire situation, post-fire rebuild. The governor's already called for, and did a declaration waiving CEQA for the rebuild. And potentially, he's called to waive the Coastal Commission's authority. We'll see how that plays out. But there will definitely be a, the top priority within the legislature will be California's affordability crisis, as they call it, and then also trying to rebuild the Los, a lot of Los Angeles. And, and just a caveat, the, the Summer Olympics are slated in 2028, Los Angeles. So there's, there's a number of, not the least of which is getting people back to some level of normalcy, but also there's some national and international attention coming in, in 2028. As you know, the, all 80 members of the Assembly were up in November, and 20 of the 40 senators were up for election. And the legislature was sworn in on December 6. We have, and we will have two, we do have two vacancies, one in the Assembly, one in the Senate, as one senator went to the local Board of Supervisors and former Assembly member went and filled former Speaker of the House Kevin McCarthy's seat. But all that said, we have 29 new members that were sworn in December 6. And coupled with 37 new members the prior in 2022. So 60-plus members of the 120, about 55% of the members of the legislature, 66 of them, have two years or less experience. Your state senator has been fantastic to work with over the years. I've worked with Senator Laird longer than either one of us would probably admit. And Assembly Member Addis, you know, given the, the new class, she's, she's a veteran now with her two years of experience. So you're, you're well positioned, well represented with Senator Laird and Assembly Member Addis. And there's opportunities, despite all the statewide challenges, I think, to, to get a lot done for your city, given the mayor and council's direction to do so. And one other piece on the post-election, you know, there's a lot of analysis out there. The, the two things I would just note that I think stood out irrespective of partisan politics, and that is, again, the retail theft package passed overwhelmingly. And for the first time since 1996, the voters of California, first time any state in the Union has voted down a minimum wage initiative. So we saw kind of more, and we also saw the affordable housing measure voted down. We saw more of a move, I would say, towards the dinner table and, and cost of living in California and, you know, public safety, and we'll see how that continues to play out within the legislature. One thing that I would note, given I started recognizing 1,000-plus new bills, the Assembly Speaker and the Senate Pro Tim started in December with a priority to focus on California's affordability. Obviously, the fires have complicated that. But also in doing so, they've reduced the number of bills each member of the legislature can introduce. So perhaps that's the good news. We may only see 2,000 rather than nearly 3,000 introduced. But the Assembly reduced their number, excuse me. But the Assembly reduced their number, excuse me, from 50 bills down to 35, and the Senate reduced it from 40 bills down to 35 for each member. So we will see less bills. The deadline to introduce all legislation is February 21. We'll see a lot of spot bills, which means we'll have 30 days plus or minus to add a lot of the substance to those bills. And perhaps we'll have less bills, but a lot more excitement given the, the challenges ahead. So in closing, I'll, I'll stop there. I would be remiss if I didn't compliment your management team. Their guidance, the direction is invaluable. It enables us to share a lot of success in Sacramento. Maybe doesn't always feel like success, but we, we try to find a path given the, the dynamics. And again, thank you for the opportunity and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any member of the council have questions for Mr. Gonzalez? No, thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, for representing us. And I hope you've, you know, had some success from time to time for us, and we greatly appreciate that. I am curious, in your assessment, what do we have to fear, you know, most from the state legislature? You know, they, they seem to, as we saw with the discussion on the earlier item, you know, they're constantly coming up with new housing bills, most of which essentially were trying to, you know, browbeat cities into, you know, allowing more units in various locations. And so obviously, that's a theme that I think is going to continue. But are there any other areas that cities in particular need to be worried about, you know, coming out of the legislature this year or this session?
You know, Mayor, it's a very good question and one that brings about a few different scenarios in my mind, and perhaps I'm a little jaded after nearly 30 years of this, but, you know, they take our money. And once they get the money, they take our authority. And we've seen an ongoing trend that doesn't necessarily, doesn't appreciate, in my opinion, local land use authority and the fact that one size does not fit all. You know, the, the land use priorities and needs of your residents are very different than San Francisco or Los Angeles or Oakland, or, you know, the, the big 13, as we call them, or 14, I guess we're up to now. So I would say a continued erosion of local land use authority and, you know, given the budget deficit, there's always a penchant to try to look at what we call Citibank to try to, to fill that gap. And so far, we've staved off the last couple of budget cycles, any proposed shifts of, of local revenues and, you know, I hope that continues because during the good times, when there was $100 billion surplus, yes, we got projects and a few, you know, tidbits for local agencies throughout the state, but we don't get a piece of the new money. So we, we try to advocate to, to not take our money when times are tough because we don't get it back when times are good.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your insights. I think we are done unless further comments by staff. Then thank you again, and we will proceed to the third portion of this agenda item that is considering a position on an issue raised by SlowCog. Not sure who on staff is going to address this.
I will introduce it a little bit and then James Worthley with SlowCog is here and he'll do a brief presentation for you. As you may have seen in the agenda, SlowCog is requesting that the city councils of all seven cities, they consider a request on legislative efforts that will allow for a future voter-approved SlowCog transportation-specific sales tax measure to be waived from the 2% local sales tax limit. So currently, there's a state sales tax that is made up of Bradley Burns and direct money to the state, which is about 7 point, excuse me, 7.25%. And then you have an additional 1.5% here in the city through our tax measures, which then gets us to our current 8.75. If SlowCog were to do a tax measure that, that was a half-cent sales tax measure, that would tap out the amount of taxes that could then be considered local district taxes here in Atascadero. So what SlowCog has been talking about is the potential of getting a waiver, a legislation that would then waive that so that if there were initiatives or other cities, because we are not the only city, we are one of five that have that same sales tax rate, that if there were other cities that needed to do another sales tax measure, raise sales tax measure, or there was a an initiative done, a voter initiative for a sales tax measure, that they would not be precluded from doing so because they were already at the limit. So and I will turn this over to James and he can talk a little bit more about SlowCog's efforts and what they are asking of the city council.
Okay, Mr. Worthy, thank you for coming and please go ahead.
Thank you for having me. I'm James Worthley, SlowCog staff. I'm the deputy director and if a slideshow could come up, I'd be really happy to see that. Go to the next slide. Laura did a great job introducing this item. This item is on legislation. If state legislation is introduced and supported at the state, it will retain your future local funding options. Now let me back up just a little bit. Go ahead and click through several clicks. Thank you. One more. Perfect. Laura hit on all this already. The base sales tax in all of California is 7.25%. That's the lowest sales tax anywhere that is existing in our unincorporated counties. So Templeton, Cambria, Avila Beach, the sales tax is seven and a quarter. In Atascadero, there is that one and a half percent general purpose add-on already, so 8.75%. That leaves that 0.5% remaining under the maximum cap, the maximum cap of 2% for local add-ons. Now, 10 counties have already gone to legislation and asked for special legislation such as this to exceed, really it's not exceed that cap because it doesn't add on to the 9.25, it adds on to whatever the sales tax is. So it's outside that 2% cap is what happens. One more click, please. And that's what this legislation item could do. If that 0.5% is taken up by any city or a city or multiple cities see that as their future need, it could preclude a regional entity from going forward with a sales tax region-wide and providing funding that way. It's not just SlowCog that would be looking at that half percent. It could be a local agency, it can be a county, it can be for multiple purposes. And it could even be for college infrastructures. So click again, please, or two times. And so going outside that statewide, it could go above by 2%. That's not what this is asking for. This is asking for 1% above that, a waiver of 1% above. SlowCog, if it proposes a measure, would be looking or considering, could be as low as a quarter percent, could be as high as 1%. At this point in time, it's hard to say. You want to do voter polling before you decide exactly what's going on and what's needed. So one more click, please. So this all relates, it's, it's good to back up and talk about where we are and where we're going. So legislation is the key thing here. But it's related to transportation fundings, related to the gas tax, it's related to sales tax, possibly if a measure is proposed. Another click, please. And let's see, good. So this looks at the gas tax. SlowCog primarily is a funding agency. We want to help you fund your transportation improvements, highways, bikeways, sidewalks, safe routes to school, downtown improvements. These are things that SlowCog funds, but without funding, we become less of a funding agency and just more of a planning agency, which means we don't get anything done. This is the gas tax of the last 70 years. The green line shooting up there shows 2004 where it peaked and it's gone down from there. In the early 2000s, click again, please. We saw hybrid vehicles, high mileage vehicles coming out and those started the dip. 2008 Tesla came out, but it took a long time for EVs, electric vehicles, to become popular in the last few years, three years. EVs market share of new vehicles, 15%, 20%, and in 2023, 25% of all new vehicles sold were electric vehicles. That is impacting gas tax. The gas tax is how SlowCog gets funds. SlowCog gives those funds to the local agencies to develop the transportation projects that I already mentioned. That is the trend line that SlowCog dollars is on. That's not where other agencies are on, however. Click again, please. This is a picture of our region-wide sales tax of what one half cent would collect, would have collected. How about that? So this is the trend line that 25 other counties are on. They are going up. Our sales tax last year collected $35 million. We didn't collect, sorry, that doesn't sound, a half-cent sales tax region-wide would have collected $35 million. Over those 15 years, $350 million. That doesn't include the doubling, tripling, or quadrupling of taking those funds and going to the state to outcompete those other 25 counties in order to get grant funding back. We receive our formula funds, but there's a big pot of competitive funds. If you can't compete, you don't get them. We're being outcompeted left and right. The orange or gold line is inflation. So you can see how our sales tax is outpacing inflation. And we are in the top two or three counties doing that. We are missing out on tourism dollars that are not spending or not providing us the sales tax for our transportation infrastructure projects. Let's see what the next slide shows. Oh yeah, that's the slide. That's the line that adjusts that for the inflation. Thank you. One more time. Okay, so again, nothing here proves or initiates any new tax, nor does it change how tax measures might be approved. It merely reduces conflicts of potentially dueling measures for the remaining half-cent sales taxes out there. It also retains that future local funding source or options for you. Now, you're one of seven cities weighing in on this. Last year in 2024, when I made the rounds, I was hearing other cities say that 2% cap, we might need that. We don't want you getting in the way of that. That's what initiated this. Maybe we need something to be outside that 2% because if enough cities say, we don't want you to get in our way, which has been the common theme for the last 20 years, then we can't go forward. I think the staff report may have different options. Our, our options were to take no action to authorize the mayor to sign it or tell us something else, I guess. Happy to take any questions.
Okay, let's see, Councilmember, to start on the left, your Councilmember Peak, do you have any questions for Mr. Worthley?
Just that, you know, just to be clear, half cent to two, half percent to 2%. Approving this leaves that open to any further measures to fill up to that point.
Supporting this legislation doesn't approve the legislation. It moves it forward. So potentially, yes, it leaves that half cent for other purposes. This waiver would, I didn't do a very good job on that. This waiver would be specific to transportation. It wouldn't be anything but regional transportation purposes.
Okay, so to be clear on that, you mentioned asking for a 1% waiver instead of the 2% waiver, which has been more common in other counties that have asked, that have gotten legislation on this. So you're saying it would only be asking, and I assume we're talking about having one of our local reps, either Senator Laird or Assembly Member Addis, carry legislation that would authorize jurisdictions in this county to exceed the, the 2% local cap. But you would, you would say that you would specify in the legislation that this is only for countywide transportation? Or would you not?
Okay, yes. Yes, to a senator needs to carry this forward in order to gain any traction. Yes, to, it would be transportation-specific. It would not be available to all local jurisdictions to go after it themselves. This would essentially bifurcate it to say this, if approved, it proposed to voters and approved by voters, this would be outside that 2% and you had one other part where there was other counties hitting 2%. Some counties have reached 2%, some are lower than that.
Okay, but in their legislation, their legislation was like, hey, just give us 2% more leeway. And they've pursued it, whereas you would narrowly focus this to say, give us leeway for a countywide transportation measure. And that way, that would not free up the cities to ask for any additional, any further things up to a higher cap.
Correct. It would not allow the cities to go for a general tax per se beyond that what exists in our current state law.
Right. Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'm a little confused now based on what we heard at our city manager's meeting. So to be really clear, right now, if the city of Atascadero City Council wanted to, and we are not doing this, let me be clear. We, our current sales tax rate is at 8.75. State law allows for a rate in our jurisdiction to go to 9.25, correct? So there's a half a percent of value left that a voter could add to the sales tax, correct?
A city or a region or a countywide
Right.
measure for that half percent.
Okay, so council's clear on that. So right now, the highest burden an Atascadero citizen could have, or for a slow county, we're focused on our citizens, is nine and a quarter percent. What I understood that SlowCog was asking was for transportation purposes to raise that potential, I think you're saying 1%, I heard 2, but to raise the potential of a tax burden to, for, you're asking us to support legislation for the senator to carry a bill that would raise that cap from nine and a quarter to what? For transportation purposes only. I'll be really clear so the council understands that because that wasn't what I understood.
You said from nine and a quarter to what? Well, we're not at nine and a quarter yet, anywhere.
But that's what we, you could be. So if we had a half-cent sales tax for SlowCog, we'd hit nine and a quarter and we could accommodate that, but nobody else could have taxes. That'd hit the nine and a quarter.
That would effectively block everybody.
You're, you're asking for the council to consider a bill that would raise that potential to what?
It gives the opportunity to go up to, to 1% above the nine and a quarter. The opportunity, it does not mean a tax. It means it still has to go through the measure process, the voter process, and the level process. Now, to be clear, typically, transportation-specific measures, most of them have been at half a percent. So where we would land, it's hard to say. This is exactly where we're going to land until we land there.
So, so Slow asking for this 1% waiver is, and is that, that's exactly what Senator Laird is trying to do, or, or I just want to make sure that he's not going to look for a waiver that could then be used for anything other than transportation?
Correct.
It would be specifically. Even so, what, even what he's, his legislation is specifically for transportation, exactly what.
That's right, specifically for transportation purposes, region-wide, not a local transportation measure.
Right. And that, so that 1%, then if it does get used up, it preserves the half a percent that we still have available to us.
It does that, correct.
Councilmember Funker.
Yeah, just so, following on this, not to be nail in, but so, so we, if this were to pass, were to pass and, and come to fruition as envisioned by SlowCog, legislation would be carried forward in the state legislature that would say if a countywide transportation-specific tax, which would require two-thirds voter approval, countywide, were to be offered, that up to 1%, you know, a 1% tax would not count against the cap.
Correct.
But otherwise, we have the caps, the amount of local sales taxes that can be applied
That is correct.
on all of our visitors as well as residents. Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Okay, Councilmember Newsom, any questions?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. You had mentioned that if there was this additional tax in place, it would have accumulated 35 million over 15 years?
35 million last year, 350 million over the last 15 years.
And in some of the presentations and material you've provided us, you've also mentioned, because it's not in place, you're losing out on how much in matching funds for transportation.
And, and those agencies with with that sales tax in place already, those 25 counties with 90% of the California's population, they go after those grant funds by using a sales tax to match and leverage dollars back to them outside of the formula that, that we only receive the formula, for sure.
So what would that relate to in our city of potential transportation?
How much would it leverage back to us? Is that the question?
Yes, approximately.
My crystal ball is not that clear, but for a safe route to school project, oftentimes you can see a put in $1, get $10 back.
Okay, and how, how many other cities? Okay. And how, how many other cities throughout the state have a higher sales tax rate at the 10.25%?
I know 37% of all Californians have a, a waiver. How many sale, how, one more time, how many cities have a sales tax above?
At 10.25 or higher.
10.25?
Yeah.
Hang on.
Crystal ball.
I believe most of the cities through, I don't have the number, but all the cities in Alameda County, that's eight. Contra Costa has a couple. Los Angeles has all of their cities seem to be 10 and a quarter or above, which looks to be 40. I know, hard to count.
I'll make it easier.
Quite a few, how about that?
How many of those cities are our size or equivalent to our size of population?
Population size? I can't answer that, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just wanted to see what kind of data you had.
Yeah.
All right, thanks for your
I have it at the office.
No worries.
Okay, suffice to say, I mean, there are a lot of cities of all sizes in LA County that have the higher rate. It's much more common down there than than elsewhere in the state. Did you have an add on Councilmember Funker?
Yeah, I just wanted to also clarify so that, so that this applies to a countywide transportation initiative and are the transportation tax that we have that we're going to discuss in just a moment, what we've done with it, and the amazing results that we have achieved with our F-14 money that, that is now extended by, by 70% of our local voters, that that doesn't count in terms of this waiver, because it, it is not structured, as I understand it. It is a tax that would require two thirds voter approval.
You're, you're right on the point. The local taxes that have been passed here in Atascadero and are doing great things for transportation, that one and a half percent fits within the current cap, does not count outside the cap. And it would be countywide transportation specific.
Thank you.
Okay, um, question, uh, cause I'm, this is a little different than what I initially anticipated, which was a, a, an ask for 2% cap raising the cap, and I think that would be very concerning to some residents. But I'm curious, so you, you know, now it seems that you're focused on, you know, a 1% rise in the potential cap in, with legislation talking specifically about a transportation only measure. Given that, you know, what's been asked for typically elsewhere around the state, given the close call on Measure J in 2016, I can't imagine SlowCog for one moment entertaining a 1%, you know, tax measure. Why not just ask for half percent?
Why not a waiver for?
For a waiver, yeah, ask Senator Laird to carry legislation, saying, hey, raise our cap half percent, and then and that would allow SlowCog to ask the voters to go that way.
We absolutely wrestle with that same thought. Why are we stretching? And, and what it comes down to is when doing polling, oftentimes we'll ask a range of sales tax to see where the appetite is supported by the voters, and that range oftentimes goes up as high as three quarters of a cent. The, the likelihood of that happening, again, the crystal ball's not perfect. It's most likely going to land at half percent. I think if everybody said, you know what, why don't you just go for a half cent waiver, and let's do that? I'm sure Senator Laird would be happy to do that as well.
And in one of your slides, you mentioned specifically the, you, you mentioned Cal Poly and, and our citizens initiatives, because as far as I know, and I could be wrong about this, but as far as I know, none of the seven cities are considering a further sales tax measure for 2026 at this point, but obviously we're early in the two-year cycle. And therefore, and I think several cities did ask SlowCog to defer in 2024, but feel like, okay, you know, SlowCog did defer, 2026 is their turn to ask the voters. And that, you know, now the cities should not get in the way of SlowCog, but Cal Poly, you're saying Cal Poly could request a tax, which would apply only to their, quote, residents, I guess? And/or a citizens initiative could ask for something countywide, which would use up the cap and preclude you then from doing something in 2026, is that correct?
So Fresno State University in Fresno County has a sales tax supporting their infrastructure. So a region wide tax supporting the college infrastructure, sales tax.
Right, which I think most of us never heard of, of a, of a state university having a taxing, a sales taxing authority.
And, right, and, and this is exactly why the waiver has come up is because two years prior to an election, the slate's clean, it looks good, go ahead. And then as you close the election, it becomes a, wait a minute, we've got a new priority. And this has happened time and time again over the last two decades, where the initial sales tax by the first four cities came up and SlowCog said, no problem, we'll get out of the way. And then the next city said, we want to go, we'll get out of the way. And then two north county cities said, we want to go in 2010 and 2012. That's okay, we'll get out of the way. 2016 cleared the decks one time. Now that's 10 years past. I don't know if anybody remembers other than a handful of folks about that election. 2020, we said, we're not going forward. You guys go for it. And then 2022 and 24 came along. We said, okay, we're going. Now, wait a minute, others wanted us to get out of the way. We've stepped back for 20 years. How many more times were we going to step back before we're no longer a funding agency?
Thank you for the answer. Okay, any further questions from council or Mr. Worthley? If not, I want to open this up to public comment, because it's, it's not quite a separate item, but separate enough, just want to see if anybody, member of the public wishes to comment on this. And then if I don't see anybody approaching the podium, not, we'll bring it back for discussion amongst council. Mr. City Manager, do you have any comments on this?
I do not, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, let's discuss this in the council, amongst council, in light of the, kind of the new level of detail provided by Mr. Worthley. Anybody want to go first? Well, how, how, I mean, yeah, go, go ahead, Councilmember Newsom.
That's your SlowCog rep.
That's a good idea.
Thank you. I've been reading a lot of SlowCog material and handouts. Thank you. You've been very informative. I think it's always a challenge to ask voters for an increase in tax. I know that we did just get our F-14 and our D-20 in place over my time on the dais, and I know it's always challenging to ask for more money. I also know that our roads and our infrastructure are vital to our public safety, so I kind of toy with, you know, the lesser of the evil and making sure that we're not asking too much of our citizens. Obviously, we want it to be affordable to live here. We have challenges with our younger generation being able to afford living here, and then we add this increase in sales tax. So I'm a little hesitant on doing the, the full gamut of, you know, exceeding it above and beyond. I think the smaller of an ask is always better.
Councilmember Funker?
Yeah, I just, I want to, I recognize the situation where we're really losing out for our county in matching dollars. I also just want to acknowledge that I hate this process, because essentially, it's a way where for the state to push the burden of roads onto municipalities through, through these taxes, that there's, it's a shift in money where you, we don't get the money to fix roads in our city and countywide for the, the major projects unless we're able to compete by ponying up some of our own money. And that seems to me that the state is pushing its obligations out on us. Now, that being said, this is the deal. This is how it works. And I want to see us be able to compete for the money to have our roads work right, because it drives people nuts if they can't get to and from where they need to be. And, and it's really hard on folks if our roads continue to be in terrible shape. We need to be able to maintain them and expand them and do the things that work for our community. So we need, you know, some access to funding to be able to be competitive in the current way that this is funded. So I do think that we shouldn't allow more than a 1% in increase. I also think we should include in our motion guidance to SlowCog not to go for more than half a percent, encourage that because of the, exactly what Councilmember Newsom just said, with that, our folks are struggling. And, you know, adding to that burden is, you know, is not helpful right now. So you know, I would encourage SlowCog to be very modest in anything that they might wish to put before voters. And also acknowledge that anything that SlowCog does put before voters requires two thirds voter approval.
Thank you. Mayor Protemderes?
Yeah, actually, I would agree with a lot of that. I think, I think the two thirds vote thing is really important. I'm always hesitant to do anything that's going to make it easier to raise taxes. If you raise the cap, we're going to eventually get there, and I think that, that's, that, that makes me nervous. The fact that this is specific to transportation, I think, is a little more comforting. Just raising the cap just so we can add more taxes, I think I would absolutely not get for that, but I know we're doing pretty well with our roads. Our, our tax initiative is, is doing its job. We're able to stay on, fairly on track and keep our roads maintained and improved over the past 10, 15 years. So with this, yeah, if we could limit it really to a half cent and the two thirds vote, I would, I probably would be more comfortable with that myself.
Okay, Councilmember Peak?
I'm not really clear on, like, project specific. We hear transportation. I think a lot, sometimes I hear public transportation, bikeways, pathways, walkways. Historically, how much, you know, is it really, I'm just thinking of the, the, the everyday Atasca resident who gets in their vehicle and drives down the road to go to, to go to work. It's more concerned with our local roads, probably. Just kind of clarification on what a safe, maybe I should have asked when you were at the podium, what a safe road to school, what that, what that means.
Yeah, we, we can bring Mr. Worthley back up, but I would just comment that, I mean, how money is spent by SlowCog is up to the SlowCog board, of which, you know, every all seven cities have a rep and all five supervisors sit on that, so the 12-member board, and they decide on the prioritization of these, you know, of spending wherever money SlowCog has available. And so, you know, mostly we're talking Highway 101 improvements, freeway, overpasses, interchanges, but there are also these other things in terms of, but, you know, safe routes to school and act, what they call active transportation, meaning bikes and, you know, walking trails and stuff like that.
Sure, but Caltrans does maintain the highway. This is for maintenance.
The, the physical maintenance, yes, but they don't expand. Like, if you want to put in a third lane down in Pismo or make the highway in 46 interchange better, they expect SlowCog to fund, fund that.
But looking from a resident of Atascadero standpoint, that maybe you wouldn't see the value in improving the lanes down in Pismo Beach and adding to our sales tax to do that elsewhere.
Very, very true.
How much of the, the SlowCog, how much is the board? The weight of the, of the board, projects wise, the prioritization of the projects, does it typically go to more dense areas?
The more urban areas, I'd say predominantly, most of the dollars go to urban areas, almost. I don't know the percentage, but a significant portion go to urban areas, meaning our major cities and larger communities and where a 101 project, anywhere there's an interchange, it's a huge lift, and a single jurisdiction doesn't have enough money to pay for it, and Caltrans won't pay for it. So in interchange in Atascadero, SlowCog and, and Atascadero are partners until it's done. And that's the only way things get done. Mr. Mayor, you hit all your answers correctly. Councilmember Newsom is on SlowCog board, along with the six other cities plus all five supervisors. They set the priorities, determine where the funds go and at that time. But in terms of a sales tax measure that was proposed and approved by voters, that measure, as it's developed, is developed with your staff and then with your public and with yourselves. You, you would each weigh in collectively on the draft, and then a SlowCog proposed measure is seeking your approvals as well. So if you want no dollars for a specific transportation mode, you guys could say that. A safe route to school, examples are near Santa Rosa School, the sidewalks are built around the neighborhoods to the school, and even better one, I think, is a great example, San Gabriel School, my kids went to school, where traffic was jammed up and nobody could get by either direction, because all the cars were, all the parents picking up were parked in the roadway, waiting to get into the parking lot. Now they can park at the church down the road, and the kids can walk the trail a half a mile or less safely to their cars that are parked at that church.
I think also, if I recall correctly, when Measure J-16 was on the ballot, there was a fairly substantial and clear list of different projects that would occur if, if approved in different communities. And, and so, you know, it obviously would increase the amount of funding available for major 101 interchange projects, but, you know, kind of probably to entice people, there's, you know, a list of, you know, gee, this would happen in Atascadero, this would happen in, in Pass Robles, et cetera, as well as enabling more of those really big ticket items that are considered regional to where, you know, even all of us have probably experienced a slowdown at Pismo Beach, or, you know, driving south on 101, that sort of thing. So, but it is a big deal in terms of, you know, how things are prioritized. That's a very big deal and of very strong interest to each community, of course.
Mayor, Mayor, mind the council, the, uh, sales tax for SlowCog is not on the agenda, so they have not proposed that. What is on the agenda is, does the Atascadero City Council support legislation that would raise that limit from nine and a quarter to 10 and a quarter to be used for transportation purposes?
Thank, thank you for the reminder, get us back on track. I, I were one, would, would be very comfortable with what Mayor Protemderes mentioned, and that is, and it goes along with what Councilmember Newsom said, which is, you know, going for the minimum, if you will. I see that somebody, some local jurisdiction, Cal Poly, another city, whatever, a citizen initiative could come along and use up the remaining half percent cap, which would then preclude a SlowCog option. And so I can see supporting, or asking, signing a letter, asking Senator Laird to carry legislation that would authorize a countywide sales tax for transportation purposes only for a half cent, and that would leave that option open. And the key thing is, of course, it's all up to the voters. I mean, the voters are the ones that get to decide this. No council, no SlowCog board can impose a sales tax. Only the voters can approve it. And, you know, I believe in giving voters options and having them decide, is this worth it? Is it what we want to see happen? So I could see supporting what Mayor Protemderes mentioned, halves, you know, ask Senator Laird to carry legislation for a half cent up to, that would raise the cap to allow a half cent sales tax measure for transportation. If that's amenable with, you know, if you want to make a motion to that effect?
I'll go with, you just made the motion.
I outlined it. Okay, yeah, do I have any, well, I'll go ahead and make that motion then, and, and then if you want to second it. Is that clear enough for staff? Okay.
Well, then, that is a motion made, and I will second.
Okay, and then Councilmember Peak, you have a question?
So I'm unclear if it's all the cities in the county have unanimously, unanimously asked, what if we're the ones with less, we're asking for less?
That's a fair question. This is our position. Senator Laird could take it upon himself to ask for the, a, a full cent raise in the cap. He could decide, no, I wanted everybody unanimous. He could, you know, so I'm just saying that would be what we would support. Ask, ask Senator Laird to support, if that makes sense.
He's basically polling the cities to see what interest there is in carrying a bill of this nature. So you're sharing what parameters you would support.
Okay, with that, let's go for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Funk?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Peak?
Yes.
Mayor Protemderes?
Yes.
And Mayor Robo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Now I think I'm ready to move on to the next item, and not prematurely this time. So with that, we are going to move on to, let me check. Does anybody in council or staff prefer that we take a break at this point? Keep going? Okay, let's keep going. We will move on to item C2, our approval of the fiscal year 2024 annual road report.
Thank you very much, Mayor and council. And after that great discussion on transportation, we will follow up Um, and after that great discussion on transportation, we will follow up with our very own, um, discussion on Measure F-14. So we will pull up the presentation momentarily here. Okay, so I'm very pleased to present you, um, again, as we do annually, the report for the sales tax measure of 14. So back, um, when this was originated in July of 2014, it outlined some of the reporting requirements and, um, the reporting requirements for the Citizens Sales Tax Oversight Committee. Our annual report includes financial statements, revenue information, and expenditure information. Luke, can you forward it? It's not working. Okay, um, the revenue, the retailers did begin collecting this tax on F-14 in April of 2015. And the tax did have a 12-year life and will sunset on March 31st, it should be March 31st, actually, 2027. Um, and fortunately, last, uh, November, Measure L-24 was passed and voted in by 70% of the voting public. So this will continue, Measure F-14, it does not increase, it just continues when, uh, F-14 expires. So there is no change in there, just a continuation. Um, and that will continue until the, um, voters vote against it. So total sales tax revenue earned for the period of July 23 through June 24 was about 3.2 million. Interest earned, uh, is listed in the financial statements as about 195,000, but, um, I will let you know what was actually earned was about 120,000. We do have an accounting adjustment that we need to mark all of our investment to fair market value. So that does have a, um, an in, a paper increase essentially of 75,000 that will, um, be reversed in the, the next year. Um, the expenditures for the project, uh, we were just finishing up with, uh, the 2022 pavement rehabilitation and the 2023 pavement rehabilitation was really far underway at about 3.7 million. And then we were just starting with some of the other projects. The total fiscal year, we spent about 4.1 million. The fund balance at the end of the year was about 3.3 million and this is being used and will be used for, for future projects, um, as we go forward. So anything that is remaining in our current projects at the end of the period, if we have any savings on projects, we build those into future projects and we'll be looking at all of that as we develop the budget here for this next two-year budget cycle. And Director DeBar can answer any questions on those specifically, if you have any. Um, we did have a lot of success during this last, uh, well, during the entire time of the, the F-14, we've been able to address over 15, uh, centerline miles that have been paved with F-14 funds, representing about 39% of all city-maintained roads. 21.4 million we spent on, um, neighborhood roads out there and the roads that are considered excellent have increased by, uh, 15%. We've done more than 80 neighborhood road segments. So that's something to really be proud of, of our program. We do have the Community Road Report, which was presented, uh, to the, uh, Citizens Sales Tax Oversight Committee last month and with, uh, council's approval will be mailed to each one of the residents in our community. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any council questions for staff? Looking to the left, looking to the right. Oh, Councilmember Funk?
Yeah, this, this one is for Director DeBar, just to confirm that the way that, for people's benefit, the way that the roads are chosen for the, for being repaired reflects a very strategic process, as I recall, based on pavement condition indexes that are surveyed every five years, looking at, at how they are and prioritizing it. Could you explain a little bit further how that's done?
Uh, sure. So the question is how are roadway projects selected?
What's, how are they prioritized?
Sure. So every five years, we, uh, do a visual inspection on all the roads and they get ranked on a score from zero to 100, which is called the Pavement Condition Index. And, uh, that's entered into a software program that we put a budget in and we say we have X amount of dollars to spend. And that, um, uh, program uses a process called Critical Point Management, where it looks at roads that, um, are in a condition that if left untreated or, uh, alone, it'll fall into a state of disrepair that will cost exponentially more to re, to bring back to a good condition. So for instance, you have maintenance, rehab, rehabilitation and reconstruction. So a lot of the roads, um, that are on PCI of 70 are often selected and then around 30, too. So those are the breakpoints, we call them, uh, from maintenance to rehab and rehab to reconstruction.
Okay, thank you. And I could, would confirm that, that you, that program does not contain the addresses of anybody that's up here on this news, right?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that last part.
So your program doesn't contain the addresses of anybody who's up here on the night?
Not at all. Nope, it's, uh, purely scientific and, um, we use some engineering judgment with that, too.
Thank you. It's, it's served us well. Thank you.
It, it has, and to reiterate that point, I mean, the, the council has to technically approve what you do, but the council does not intervene or interfere with this and say, oh, I want this street fixed first or what have you. Um, and, and that's very important because there are cities where that happens and this is simply not one of them. And also, I, I think the point you're making is important for the public to realize when they see that, well, why'd they fix that road? That's a 70. Well, because it's, you know, fix it now, when it's at 70, it's going to save a lot of money instead of letting it fall down to 50 or something. And now it's going to cost way more to fix. Uh, so, because some people will say, well, why, why'd they fix that road? It's not too bad. This one over here is horrible. And it's like, okay, well, yeah, but this one that's horrible isn't going to cost anymore if we wait another year. But if we don't fix some of those that are at 50, but you're doing a combination of each of those, each year, you're doing the, what you call maintenance, the easiest treatment, the rehab, the middle of the road and the full reconstruction. So you're seeing that happen each year within each, you know, each iteration we do this, right?
That's correct. I mean, some years, most years, we do a, uh, resurfacing, which is the same as maintenance. So it's not really adding structure to the road and then rehabilitation or reconstruction.
Yeah.
So there's a combination. We bid those out as separate projects.
Right. Okay, and I think, you know, the public sees this progress with all this progress you've done, everybody, if it's not their own road, they are driving over roads that they've seen fixed, repaired or redone. And that showed with a 70% approval of, of renewing our half-cent sales tax measure, which was, you know, higher, considerably higher than any other city in the county. So I think the public has seen the proof in the pudding. With that, do we have any public comment on this matter? Thank you. Please come to the podium. Please state your name for the record.
My name is David Mattson. I live on, uh, San Alisea Road. Question, how do we rank San Alisea Road between Portola and San Gabriel? I mean, based on the algorithm that we're discussing here, we may never fix that road because at this point, it's probably worse just letting it go back to gravel or macadam. So, uh, that's a comment. I don't expect an answer here. I'm just telling you point-blank, folks, we get another two inches of rain, that road's going to be completely gone.
Okay, thank you for your comment. And, and Mr. DeBar can get with you and speak directly about that, but I would also note for folks that this, the Measure 14 money we're talking about, and soon it'll be Measure, or J-24, was it? M-24, L-24, um, that this money is going for neighborhood roads and certain roads, major roads in our town are collector roads that are funded through different sources of funding, correct?
Uh, that's correct. There's, uh, three separate, uh, roadway classifications. Arterials, which are like the El Camino Real collectors, which are, um, like in San Alisea. And then, um, local roads or residential, which would be the smaller roads. Uh, Mr. Mattson, you leave?
Uh, should be, uh, we'll be happy to hear this, but we have, um, 90% construction plans done for San Alisea currently. We're getting ready to bid that out from Portola all the way to the new bridge. It's about two miles. It's a, it'll be a great project to do. And, however, however, this is not F-14 monies that are funding this. It's, uh, other funding.
Because this is a collector street or something. It's not a neighborhood.
Um, well, collector roads and local roads have been the two roadway classifications that Measure F-14 has been spent on.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Councilmember Peak, question?
Sort of pertains to it, too, especially for the public comment, but for, you know, since I've taken this position, I mostly get asked about the roads and like public infrastructure. And our map is super awesome, you know, about the F-14 and, and upcoming roads and everything, but you're not the first person that's brought up San Alisea Road. And, you know, um, I learned that information a week or two ago and, which is great, but, um, it'd be awesome if we had a, a map that included more than just the F-14 upcoming road projects, if that's possible. Because there, you know, people are going to that map online and they're saying, where's my road? Well, your road is not an F-14 road. It's a this road. It's a general budget road or, so I think that would be an awesome asset for the public.
Can, can I mention something real quick?
Go ahead, please.
I don't know, Jerry, if you can, or Luke, you can put the presentation back up, but on our, uh, our brochure, we actually include the roads in 2025 that are non-F-14 as well, just to, to let people know. It's included in the map, but, um, yeah, I don't know if you can pull it up or not. You can see.
Okay, um, while you do that, uh, do we have any other questions or comments from council? Since we've closed public comment. Okay, there it is. So you're referring to non-F-14 projects?
It's the, um, the, the blue colors are the 2025 non-F-14 projects. So you can see San Alisea there kind of snaking on the kind of middle center of the map there.
Got it. Very good. Okay, and is that also on the website in the same format? So somebody can see it, that a non, they can see the non-F-14 projects?
Yes, this, this will be uploaded to the website once, uh, council approves it.
And this is the brochure that's going to be mailed out, obviously?
Yes, it's good mailed out to all residents and, um, they'll receive this on a nice pack. We usually contract that out and have it printed professionally.
But only if we approve it, so I will take a motion to that effect.
I'll move to approve, uh, where's the word in this? The annual report for the, uh, for the roads.
I'll second.
Any comment? Okay, then go ahead and call the roll, please.
Councilmember Funk?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Peak?
Yes.
Mayor Protemderis?
Yes.
Mayor Robo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, very good. In that case, I believe we are done with our regular agenda items. We'll proceed to council announcement, announcements and committee reports. I'll start on my right with Councilmember Newsom.
Thank you. I had a SlowCog and RTA joint meeting, um, on the 7th of January. Um, kind of got acclimated to, uh, several hundred pages of reading, trying to get up to speed. Um, it's always nice to start, uh, a new year with, uh, a new learning and understanding the role that this plays in our community. Um, things to note from that meeting is RTA is working on staffing levels. Uh, Tascadero City Council will be reviewing a draft in February to possibly consolidate services. And then they're hoping to implement a contactless payment system by the fall of 2025, which should reduce operating costs long-term. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Funk?
Um, the Home Services Oversight Council will be meeting tomorrow afternoon and among other things, will be considering the, uh, processing the grants that include our Community Development Block grant, uh, recommendations. HSCAC doesn't have any say over what the city is recommended, but those are all reported as part of the package.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I'm going to skip myself for just a moment. Uh, Mayor Protemderis?
Thank you. Uh, it's been several weeks since we've met, obviously. So in December, I think it was December 12th, Visit SlowCal met, um, had a good presentation. They're, they're doing really a lot to promote, uh, San Luis County. And one of the things that I think we can do as a council, as individuals, spread the word, uh, most people consider us Central Coast. This is something that, you know, but Central Coast, by people that are way outside the area, see Santa Barbara to Monterey as Central Coast. So they're trying to rebrand us as SlowCal. We already kind of use that, so continue to use that if you can, when you talk to people outside, because that's what we're trying to brand as. But, um, they had a lot of data on, on the forecast, on how, on how things are going. Oh, I wanted to also say that there's a lot of videos that they have that they're doing to promote us. You see them when you go to the movies and, and probably some on TV ads and whatnot. Uh, I'd like to see more focus on Atascadero. There's very little in what they're showing. I know we have, we have a lot of great events here in Atascadero, thanks to Ms. Banish, who is right here today. Um, Fall Festival is outstanding in, in November. It was a huge turnout, uh, Winter Wonderland, of course, but all these different things I think needs to be more advertised among with, uh, with Visit SlowCal, so they know what we can offer and not just blind country and the beach and stuff like that. And then one last thing on that is, um, you know, the room share, the hotel rooms that we have throughout the county, I thought it was interesting that of all the rooms that are available, uh, Tascadero does provide five, five and a half percent of that. Um, of the new rooms that are, uh, estimated to be added to the inventory by 2031, it's estimated that Atascadero will actually add, be adding, the, of those rooms will be 10% from Atascadero. So we're going to be contributing quite a bit. And by 2031, we'll actually have almost 7% of the total rooms in the county. So I think that's, you know, we're, we're bringing people to town to, to have fun here and around the county. Uh, so that was, that was a SlowCal one. My other meeting was, um, uh, Capslo. And one of the most significant things in that meeting was, uh, with Prado Road, the 49 Prado, I think is the, the one next door. They acquired that property. They've got some plans already going. I think there's three large buildings, two-story buildings are going to, uh, increase the number of beds significantly. It's, it's quite a plan and, uh, uh, pretty aggressive that I think, hopefully have them, you know, all the funds for that, but it's a good plan and I hope they're able to continue on with that as well. So, uh, my next meeting's with, uh, coming up this week, Capslo again this Thursday on the 16th. Air Pollution Control District is on the 22nd.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Peak?
I have my first committee meeting tomorrow, so looking forward to that.
Very good. Thank you. Um, I, um, had an IWMA meeting, um, but, um, what I wanted to report today is, um, something that's kind of been in the works, but, uh, was just released this afternoon. Uh, our IWMA Executive Director, Mr. Peter Cron, is going to be retiring effective April 17th. And, um, this is very significant for the IWMA because Mr. Cron has done an outstanding job, in my opinion. Um, and most importantly, he's brought, uh, stability, uh, and success to the agency after a troubled period. And that's, you know, best shown in, in successfully implementing this, the state-imposed requirements of Senate Bill 1383, uh, with far less, uh, staff and a far lower rate charged on, on rate pairs bills than was anticipated. Um, and to the extent that the, we've been able to lower the rate two years running and may, maybe even be able to do so again because his, of his leadership and any efficient leadership at that. So we will be missing him. He has significant health issues he's been dealing with and, um, he's done, like I said, an outstanding job, so we will miss him and we will begin the process of trying to find a replacement. Also, as an announcement, I would mention that I, I attended a 100th birthday celebration for, uh, um, Rosemary, why am I forgetting? Um, Dexter, uh, be, and what's relevant to us is that is her husband had been mayor here in the early 90s. Um, served, I think, two terms on city council, had been a chaplain for the police department, so very much a big supporter of the community. And Rosemary is part of her 100th birthday celebration, put out a challenge, she would match up to $30,000 in donations to Tascadero Loaves and Fishes or Alf. And, and as a result of her match, over another, an additional $37,000 had been raised and continues to grow. And, and I did just commented at the celebration, how here's somebody turning And, and I did just commented at the celebration, how here's somebody turning 100 years old and still thinking of how they can serve the community. And that just encapsulates the volunteer spirit that is so in evidence in Tascadaro and how great things get done because of volunteers and community spirit. So I wanted to mention that. Okay, with that, yes, go ahead.
Apologies, I just realized that the early December meeting of the Design Review Committee took place after our last council meeting. So I should report on that also. We considered two properties, one of which was the approval by DRC of this council's guidance and on the property that will be taking place right across the street from us. At the final design approval for the, the count, the, the new property that the council has, is substantially directed its development. And that's next step is building permits for that property. It'll be moving along. And then the other thing was we consider a prop, a gave guidance to staff on a property on traffic way in the industrial zone.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, with that, any individual determinations that any member of council would like to bring up? Okay, seeing none, we will adj-
I have, I have one.
Okay.
We, I, let me start over. Okay. In December, I had come to you about the at-large positions, at-large positions for Planning Commission and C-Stock. We went out, we advertised those. Applications were due January 10th. We have two at-large positions for Planning Commission open. We have two at-large positions for C-Stock. As of January 10th, when the application period closed, we did receive two applications for Planning Commission. And we received two applications for C-Stock. So I just wanted to come and get some direction from you. Because we received two for the open, I can bring those to you the next meeting and we can move forward with the appointment process. Or you can let me know you'd like me to re-advertise, go back out and solicit some more applications. So I just wanted to bring that and get a little direction before moving that forward, since we don't have enough currently to do any type of interview process.
Okay, given, I don't know if every, just this morning, I was appraised of that and glanced at them. And I personally feel comfortable with telling you to come back in the January 28th meeting. But I don't know if everybody else has done that. And I'm looking at the city attorney. Can we, I don't know, the council would necessarily feel comfortable if they haven't looked at the applications and saying, yeah, let's just proceed. Are we, what's our latitude here, Mr. City Attorney?
Well, generally, you wouldn't be able to take action on an item tonight if it's not on the agenda. But you can give staff direction to defer it to a subsequent meeting to give you an opportunity to do this.
So we could have staff come back on January 28th with the applications in hand, with the option at that point in time present. Option A, appoint the, the applicants who equal the number of seats or B, extend the process.
That that would be one option that you could give staff direction on, yes.
You could also mayor, interview the candidates to see if you like them both. And if you do, then you could appoint them that evening. We could have a meeting before, if you'd like, or some other point. And if you, there was one you had concern with, then you could reopen. Commissioners serve until the council replaces the seat. So their timeline, this is up to the council.
Okay, so would, would council like to interview the candidates? Let's, you know, we'd have to do it like at five o'clock or something or five, there's only four total.
We've already put on your calendar for the 30th, I believe. So we already kind of set that, assuming we would have more than the two. So we do have a date that we can hold a special meeting for interviews, if that's where council would like to go.
Okay, so we could set that for the 30th, but still come back on the 28th with the option to just appoint the, the four applicants, correct?
Yes.
Okay, then how about, does that work for council? Got it. Thank you. Okay, I think we're good on that then. Okay, with that, we are going to adjourn this regular council meeting and re-adjourn or reconvene rather, in our capacity as a successor agency to the Community Redevelopment Agency of Tascadaro. So, yeah, let's take a short break while we do, and we will reconvene as the successor agency. Thank you. Take a, just make it five minutes. All right, our five minute break is up. We're reconvening as these, in our capacity as successor agency to the Community Redevelopment Agency of Tascadaro. And we will, we're calling this meeting to order. We'll begin with a roll call.
Councilmember Funk?
Yes, here.
Council, Councilmember Newsom?
Here.
Councilmember Peak?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Daris?
Here.
Mayor Borbo?
Yeah, here.
All present.
Okay, with that, we will proceed to the consent calendar, which consists of one items, one item, the minutes from last year. Is any member of the council like to pull the item? Okay, and no one, common member of the council has questions? Okay, let's see if there's any member of the public who would like to discuss or provide comment on this consent item. Seeing no member present, member of the public present in the room, we're going to assume there's not. So we will return this item to the, the council.
Move approval of the consent agenda?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by councilmember Funk and a second by councilmember Newsom. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Funk?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom? Councilmember Peak?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Daris?
Yes.
Mayor Borbo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, so we are going to move on to community forum. Again, this is reserved for person wishing to discuss the board on any matter not on the agenda and over which the board has jurisdiction. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Would anybody like to speak? Again, seeing no one, no member coming forward, we will close community forum. And we will, the next item on the agenda is our management report. Approval of the recognized obligation payment schedule for fiscal year 2526. We'll turn it over to our Administrative Services Director, Jerry Rangell.
Thank you again very much. Tonight, we have the props on the agenda as we do every January at this time. So just as a little recap, this is our annual approval of the recommended obligation payment schedule that is due to the Department of Finance in order for us to get funding to pay our redevelopment items. So this will go before the successor agency tonight. And if approved, it will go before the oversight for the countywide oversight board later this month. And then it will be sent off to the State Department of Finance for approval and then later funding through the county. So this does cover the period from July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026, and does include our very newly refunded 2024 tax allocation refunding bonds. There is also an administrative budget to pay for staff time and, and that sort of, of items. So it does just include the bond debt payment schedule, which is, like I said, for the 2024 bonds, the 2010 bonds and the 2004 bonds have been refunded. They were refunded back in July. So this is exclusively for the 2024 bonds and some bond compliance and the administrative allowance. So as I said, it will go to the oversight board next and then to the, the Department of Finance. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does any member of the council have questions for staff? Councilmember Funk?
One quick, just to confirm, the 2024 bonds, that, that is not new spending. Those, that is a refinancing of existing spending that saved money for us and for all the other agencies in the county that are part of this, right?
Yes, that is a great point. Thank you very much, Councilmember Funk. So it did save money on that refunding.
And, and this is essentially the only item left is that we're doing is paying for the, repaying these bonds, correct?
Yes, Mayor, that's correct.
And then these expire and are mature in 2041, the last of them?
2040, I believe.
Okay, and at that point in time, this agent, this successor agency will essentially go away at that point?
Correct.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Any further, any other questions? Okay, with that, let's go out to the public, see if any member of the public has comments on this item. Seeing none, we'll return it to council for a motion.
Recommend we adopt the, excuse me, adopt the draft resolution. As proposed by-
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by councilmember Funk, a second by councilmember Peak. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Funk?
Yes.
Councilmember Peak?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Daris?
Yes.
Mayor Rano, sorry. Mayor Borbo, apologies.
That's the first time, you've been 100% all evening. That's the first one.
Just came out. I apologize, Mayor Borbo.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
With that, I believe we can adjourn our meeting as a successor agency and we will reconvene in our role as the Tascadaro Public Financing Authority. Let's begin with a roll call, please.
Board Member Funk?
Here.
Board Member Peak?
Here.
Board Member Newsom?
Here.
Vice Chair Daris?
Here.
Chair Borbo?
Here.
All present.
Okay, with that, we, our first item, this seems to be different order, a community forum. Any member of the public wishing to comment on item, on an item not under the, on the agenda, but under the authority of the Tascadaro Public Financing Authority? Seeing no one comes forward, we will return for, next on the agenda looks like board announcements and reports. Does any member of the board wish to make a brief announcement on their own activities in this regard? Or ask any questions for clarification? Okay, then we will proceed to the consent calendar, which consists of draft action minutes from the meeting last year on January 9th, 2024. Does any member of the board have any questions of staff? No. And does any, we will open it to public comment. Does any member of the public have any comment? Seeing no members of the public present and are approaching, we will return it to the board and look for a motion.
Move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by councilmember Funk or by board member Funk and a second by vice chair Daris. Roll call, please.
Board Member Funk?
Yes.
Board Member Newsom?
Yes.
Board Member Peak?
Yes.
Vice Chair Daris?
Yes.
And Chair Borbo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, with that, we, I believe, are ready to adjourn. Not too bad, 8:30. All right, thank you. Happy New Year, everybody, and we'll, we'll, we'll even get even better next time.